I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
After that?
Counsel? Mayor, aye. Sunday, one of the young teens came to me after service. He said, Pastor, I really liked your sermon, especially when it was over. Not sure what he meant. You may enjoy the ending of the prayer better than the beginning, but at some point in time, we all may need prayer. And if you do, know that your Allen Park chaplains are praying for you, and we'd be happy to pray with you. Just ask. Let's pray. Lord, thank you so much for a wonderful day, a beautiful day, in a beautiful city with wonderful people. We thank you, Lord, for those who are serving us and leading us. Bless them. Lead them and guide them. And give strength to those who may be discouraged and weak, and help us to connect to you and to one another, and show the love that's in your heart to each other. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Mike, if you'll take the roll call, please.
All right, Madam Mayor. Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Blevins.
Here.
Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Valerius.
Present.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lally.
Here.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. Are there any amendments, changes?
Yes, I need to make an amendment on the third resolution.
Okay, Mr. Marcos.
Yes, I want to change the resolution, change the amount of the petty funds in each department, all departments and organizations within the city to $150 to ensure the city follows best accounting practices and uniformity.
Is there any objection to the amendment by the, those who made the motion and support? If not, then may I call for the vote for the amended agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Motion for the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of April 26th.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. And we have a presentation this evening by Chief Can.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good evening, everybody. For those of you who don't know, I'm Ed Can. I'm the fire chief. And with me today is Bruce Andrews. He is the Assistant Principal and Athletic Director at Allen Park Middle School. A lot of you might know him that are here now and maybe have had him in classes. Twenty-eight years of service to the community at that school. Started off as a teacher and worked his way up, or maybe, you know, maybe down when you're a leader because there's a lot of work to it. So, before I get started, Mike the Seal, the student and school resource officer with the police department, wanted me to wish you a belated happy birthday. So, happy birthday.
That's an inside joke.
So, recently, I read that this gentleman was in the lunchroom in his regular job capacity, and a student began to choke and was not passing air. And without action, may have, may have died. And if, if we would have arrived and he still wasn't breathing, he may have had some brain injury if we brought him back. So, what this fine gentleman did was perform the Heimlich maneuver and immediately began to allow the student to breathe again. So well that he went back and resumed his normal activities. Okay? So, I do want to, in a moment, read what this award says, this life-saving award that's being presented by the fire department. But I also wanted to take this opportunity to encourage all of you, and for you to encourage your families, to learn CPR, to learn hands-only CPR, to learn how to use an AED, and to learn the Heimlich maneuver and other basic first aid. It's not hard to do, and there are good Samaritan laws that protect you. And with hands-only CPR, you don't have to do mouth-to-mouth. You don't have to worry about disease. And it will help us, if we get there, to be able to continue. But we didn't even have to come. So, congratulations on that. So, what, what this reads is the Allen Park Fire Department Life Saving Award is being presented to Bruce Andrews for his quick thinking, immediate action, willingness to help, and staying calm under pressure, and for, and for performing the Heimlich maneuver on an Allen Park Middle School student who is choking. Congratulations. And Madam Mayor, would you, oh, a little photograph. There we go. Yeah, there you go.
And Mr. Andrews, before you leave, we have made it a habit to let council members make comments because what usually occurs is someone receives an award, or an officer is sworn in, and then they leave. And it's not until the end that we make our council comments, and they're not here to hear it. So, we've taken a new stand here, and if you would just remain a few more minutes, I will start the denime. Right, Mr. Marcos?
Thank you. Can't say enough. I, I, people don't realize how important teachers are and their skills. We have two teachers on the board. I have a daughter who's a teacher, and it's so important. And, you know, their, their lives are in your hands for six or seven hours a day. And thank you for being there. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for what you did, and fantastic job. And it's great to see assistant principals, principals, teachers doing that. And just, thank you.
Thanks. Echo what my fellow council members had said, and thank you for everything you have done and will do. And this, what makes the job fun, when we get up here and hear a great story about our community. I mean, that's what I'm certainly up here for. And I, that's something to share. So, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Tony Lally here. I really appreciate what you do for the kids. I understand. I've just saved somebody's life myself. And I feel really good to do that. Thank you again, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, Bruce.
Appreciate ya. I was in, I was in Mr. Andrews' class when I was in seventh grade in LA. Oh, I don't know. That was 30 years ago now. No. But then I had the opportunity, came back, and I worked in-school suspension, so I worked alongside. And I, big part of that was a lot of, lot of hours standing in that cafeteria. And it can, it's, in this moment, I am so thankful that you were there, but on every day. Because if you guys have never had an opportunity, I would highly recommend you go check out a middle school lunchroom. It is a interesting and a chaotic place. And Mr. Andrews here runs it with a level of mastery that, you know, is, is really amazing to see. The kids respond to him. And I'm, I'm just very thankful that, that you were there that day, you know, because it would be a very, very different news story. So, thank you so much, Bruce. I appreciate it.
As a teacher, like Mr. Lloyd, we, you know, wear many hats and different roles and everything else. So, what impressed me most after, when I watched the video, was not only how your immediate action was, but that the student approached you, you know, with ease. So, that goes, that says a lot right there, that you're approachable, and they look to you for help, assistance, and your immediate action was beneficial, for sure. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think very appropriate that you are here this evening at the end of the Teacher Appreciation Week. And I did notice on the state website that they are feeling that this should be Teacher Appreciation Month. And from my viewpoint, while I don't have any teachers in my family, I think teachers should be appreciated each and every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
And now I will open up the public hearing on the presentation of the fiscal year 2022-2023 proposed budget.
Not nearly as exciting. I'm sorry. No, Mark, Mark will really get a bump up. His will be much better. All right. So, we're presenting the 2022-2023 fiscal year budget. We are budgeting $24,596,750 in revenue, with $14 million coming from property taxes, 3.7 coming from state shared revenue, 1.7 coming from the district court, and then 1.7 from reimbursements for various other funds. 1.19 coming from the district court. That's on there twice. I have to fix that one. General fund expenditures are, it is a balanced budget, so it matches $24,596,750. Majority of our expenses are in public safety at nearly $11 million, and then retiree healthcare at 3.2 million. Other funds are also budget, balanced budgets. $13 million for water and sewer, $857,000 for the library. We have $713,000 for capital projects, $2.4 million for the brownfield, $388,000 in the community center debt. Building fund is at $674,000. DDA is at 1.5. Rubbish at $2 million. Major and local streets at 5.3, and drug forfeiture is at $81 million. $81,000. I, I do wish it was $81 million.
Different kind of presentation.
It would help our budget significantly. As I state, forfeiture money is, is kind of if come. If, if nothing, if no seizures happen, we have no money. So, if we have it, we can spend it. If we don't, that comes out of the general fund. So, I think it's important to have some historical information on here. The taxable value for the upcoming fiscal year is $879 million. And to put that into a little bit perspective, in 2007, which was our peak, we were over $1 billion in taxable value. So, we've, we've made a lot of staffing changes. We've made a lot of expenditure changes. Nothing has gotten cheaper. We certainly appreciate the road millage and the public service millage, which has helped the city out tremendously. Without those, we certainly would be in a much different position. The $713,000 in capital improvements are, are up here. The police department will be doing some software upgrades and police car replacements. The fire station will have $75,000 in miscellaneous improvements, and $145,000 in their self-contained breathing apparatus. That is also part of a grant, a regional grant that, mind that. And Lincoln Park we're able to, are part of. $30,000 for the historical house. The community center is doing flooring in a handful of the rooms. And then $6,000 for fitness center equipment. DPS has $237,000 for a street sweeper. Rubbish, so these ones are not in the $713,000. The rubbish fund will be purchasing a 30-yard rack truck. Building department, it's noted as vehicles, but it is for various capital improvements. There is a software program. He would like to get the permits online. So, that will be part of that as well. The library fund, so part of their budget to balance will be using fund balance to do some needed improvements. They would like to get an electrical, electronic sign. They are also looking at getting new windows. They are single-pane windows with also the help of an architectural consultant to maybe get, get some of the outside kind of in line with what the other buildings look like. A water panel truck is going to be purchased from Water and Sewer. That's, that's the big blue box truck that you see with the water mains, water main breaks. Water main replacement for $874,000. A lift station rebuild for $400,000. Backhoe and the trailer for $430,000, $160,000, sorry. $40,000 for lighting and $400,000 in sewer lining. So, this is about a six-year summary for the city debt. We do have a handful of debts that will be falling off in '24, '25. The DDA debt will be paid for, along with the emergency loan that was taken out when Joyce was here. We were able to refinance the emergency loan. Luckily, the state presented that option just in the nick of time. So, we have, I think the interest rate on that is like somewhere around 1%, 1.35. It's, it's really, really low. We also have the 2005 water debt coming off in '24, '25. In addition, on this chart here, there's like a peach 2007B. That is, we have enough money set aside that we won't be levying for that debt this year, so that will fall off of the tax roll. Speaking of the tax roll, so that will fall off. We also have had a Headley rollback this year. So, that was .991 mils. So, your taxes won't increase quite as dramatically as initially anticipated. We also are budgeting for water and sewer rate increases. The water rates will be $4.61. Sewer will be $5.36. There would be no change to the ready-to-serve charge. This would increase an average bill that uses about 13 units by monthly by about $8.31, or 5.8%. Any questions?
Through the chair.
Yes.
So, in your assessment, what is the financial health of, of the city?
The city is doing well. Included in that, in our revenues right now is $250,000. That comes from the brownfield. That falls off this year. That was part of an agreement that, a 10-year agreement that Joyce had made with them for police services and such. So, that, that will fall off. That will, that will, you know, you have to find $250,000 somewhere in the budget. We do have a lot of constraints with, with Headley and Prop A. And, you know, fortunately for me as a taxpayer, unfortunately for me as a finance director, we don't make widgets. I can't charge more money, you know, so that we have to get pretty creative with, with certain things that we do. You know, I, I, I really want that 7% raise to match inflation. We, we don't really have those abilities. We work a lot of magic. Mark is really, really good. All of the department heads are darn good at, at finding something that's a little bit cheaper or working their way around. We've gotten quite good at it in the last decade or so. But we still look good. This budget uses about $40,000 in fund balance. I don't, we had budgeted $160,000, I believe, for the current fiscal year to use in fund balance. And I, I don't foresee us actually using that much. So, I, we are, we are in quite good shape. The, the increase in the taxes, taxes did help this year. You know, we did get hit with Headley. So, they won't, they don't go up to 3.3% that, you know, your tax, your tax bill said that it was going to go up. Your assessment said it would go up if you are not uncapped. If you are capped home, your taxes went up 3.3%. But that will be offset by Headley.
Just for clarification, because I know this comes up, and we talk about Headley and Prop A, and people, we can read on it, and don't fully understand it. It's the L...
The L4029 will show you. So, once upon a time, the library was able to levy one mil. They are at .83 mils now. Headley and Prop A, so essentially, you, we cannot go up more than the rate of inflation. So, essentially, what happened is the home values went up higher than the rate of inflation. And so, Headley rolls that back. And then you also have Prop A for, that does the capping on your home. So, similar, that you can only go up the rate of inflation or 5%, whichever is lower. If you move out, the new homeowner is then uncapped. So, if you look at your assessment, it will say that your, your assessed value is maybe $85,000. But say you've been in your home 20 years, you know, maybe your taxable value is only at $45,000. When the new homeowner moves in, they do not get that nice tax break that you currently have.
The only, the only other thing I would say is that I believe that that L4029 gets posted on their bulletin board.
Yes.
And it's in our budget package. And I think that if you only look at one form in our budget, this gives you a pretty clear picture of what happens with millages. Because, if I recall correctly, the left-hand column will tell you what the original millage was.
Correct.
And the columns to the right tell you what's actually being levied. And in some cases, it is quite startling, the difference between what we were supposed to get at the beginning or be able to levy, and what we are now able to levy. And we still have to pay retirees, pensions, healthcare, and lots of other expenses while we're conducting business. So, I think at this point, then, if there's no further questions from, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, everything's fine. So long the cities do well, that's fine.
We're doing, we're in good shape right now. I've seen it a lot. I've, I've seen it in bad shape. We're doing quite well.
Well, at this point, I will now open up the meeting to public hearing. If anyone wishes to come up and comment on the budget, please do so at this point. All we ask is that you give your name and the street on which you live. We do not want to have your address. And do limit your comments to four minutes. So, if anyone must come up during this time, please do so. If the resident wants to come up during the public hearing for budget, I will close the public hearing, and we will take a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget.
Make a motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Motion is carried. Now, we come to some organizational business. Probably got someone here who was here longer than they thought they'd be.
In many ways.
It is my pleasure at this point to read a proclamation from the City of Allen Park, recognizing Matthew Doring for over 25 years of service with the City of Allen Park. Whereas Matthew Doring is retiring as supervisor of public services in the Department of Public Services after more than 25 years of service to the City of Allen Park. And whereas during that time, he served this community in many capacities, including animal control, ordinance officer, and heavy equipment operator in the water department. And whereas he has always displayed an outstanding work ethic and concern for the city, and was promoted to supervisor in December of 2014. And whereas in his capacity as supervisor of public services, he has dealt with forestry, roads, and all of the emergencies and public relations associated with these duties for the benefit and well-being of the entire community. And whereas before being employed by Allen Park, he served his country for seven years as an Army Combat Engineer, serving in Desert Storm, and earning a number of ribbons and medals related to that service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Gale McLeod, on behalf of the City of Allen Park and all of its elected officials, hereby recognize supervisor Matthew Doring for his service, and express our deepest appreciation for his dedication and commitment to our community, and extend to Matt and his family our best wishes for a long and enjoyable retirement. And witness whereof I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Allen Park be affixed this 10th day of May, 2022. Thank you, Matthew.
I thank you for those great words, kind words, Mayor. I mean, where to start? I've been here working for the City of Allen Park half of my life. Listening to all the budget stuff, and the councilmen's like, how is Allen Park doing? You know, I look back on when I started over 25 years ago, through the times we came through from where we weren't even know we were going to have jobs still, or if the guys were going to get paid. I mean, we, we took freezes on the raises for like nine years in the contract. And the thing is, I've been here through the really good times and the really bad times. And administration that has been coming up for the last, that's got us out of this, this, this hole in Allen Park is doing well now. It's just an amazing thing to see, you know, where it's come from. I believe that the city's doing, is doing really good. I mean, you go around there and all the stuff we're building. We got the new DPS building, which is an awesome building. The guys love it. It's a huge morale booster if anybody knew the other building. It was pretty nasty. It was an old shopping center or grocery store 50 years ago. And, you know, it's, it was just, it was terrible. But I see a lot of growth here, you know what I'm saying? And, and it's been my honor and privilege to work for Allen Park this long. I don't want to get a motion on that stuff, but, because I wouldn't hear the end of it from Bill. I made a lot of great friends here. I've been through a lot of mayors. I've been through a lot of council people. I've been through like a lot of stuff in the city, and I've made a lot of great friendships. And a lot of them are here and, and working with them. And it is kind of crazy to think about this chapter coming to an end and, you know, going into retirement, which I won't stop working, because my wife won't let me. But it has been an honor. And I really, again, appreciate everything Allen Park's done for me. And I'll never have a bad thing to say about them, you know what I'm saying? It's been a rough time in some days. I would have been retired a long time ago if I had a dollar for every time someone said I was a taxpayer to me on the phone. I'd have been gone a long time ago. Listen, I love the citizens here, and believe me, it's a hard, public service, and all you guys know is a hard job to do, when you have to deal with, you know, the public day in and day out, and you try to solve all the problems and stuff that are out there. It's almost impossible to do. I mean, when people ask me, what do you do for a job? I said to keep 18, 20,000 people happy every day. You know, I can't even keep my wife happy every day, let alone, you know, like that many people. But the reason that I, this has been, being a supervisor for the last seven years is my guys in my department, and one of the girl, Shannon's, in my department, and the water department guys, these guys and this Shannon, they just, they bust their ass every day to give the best services that the city can, can get. And if you compare them, and listen, I talked to all the cities around me. Trust me, I hear all this stuff, and a lot of people don't ask that. Our services that these people are providing in Allen Park are, they're, they're top-notch. When people hear how much things get done and how fast they get done here, and how fast we respond to calls and emergencies and this and that, it's amazing, especially for the crews we have. You know, the workforce was cut in half a long time ago, but these guys have kept up the pace, and they, they, they work hard every day, and they make my job easier. I owe all the, you know, the praise to the guys in my department that work so hard every day for me and do what I ask them to do, and to try to meet deadlines, and they do it every day for me. And I'm so thankful for them. And the same with the water department guys. I mean, I work with them. And, and, and when they come in on these nights in the freezing cold and all that, and do all these emergency main breaks and all that, these guys work hard, you know. So, everybody just, you know, I just ask the public just to respect everybody here, you know what I mean? They work hard for... They work hard for them, you know, and it's just been an honor and a privilege, like I said once, that to be able to serve Allen Park for over twenty-five years. And for me to walk out that door, I can honestly say that I gave the city a thousand percent of myself. Because I'm kinda burned out. I mean, it's just been a long road, but I'm very thankful for everybody if I've made friends with and, and been along this journey with me for all these years. And I know Allen Park's gonna continue to be a great city. There's a lot bigger, greater things coming. And it's just, I'm very thankful and thanks again.
Thank you, Matt. Would any council members like to add anything?
Take the summer off and come back. You're way too young. You guys just, just stay. Just take, take, take the summer, enjoy yourself, if you ever want to, just come back.
I wouldn't hold your breath on that.
Don't look for the blue councilman. Um, thank you. I, you know, I had an experience with you guys this year, uh, January, just after New Year's, water main broke across the street from me and my driveway. Guys were there within a half hour, gone within two to three hours, water on and off. It was unbelievable. And it was freezing cold, terrible day, terrible night, because it was, it happened about five thirty. And, and I could not believe how fast and efficient and polite. It was incre- and I know you didn't know who I, nobody knew who I was. I just, I just started on the council, so. I know you guys work hard and it's guys like you that make this city great. Thank you.
Twenty-five years, I'm gonna say, when I was, uh, age-wise, when you first started, but, um, I wanna say that you were probably one of my, like, whenever like I would go to city council meetings, even before being on council, you would always bring in information. It was just so fascinating and all that stuff when you come to the council meetings and talk about, like, one thing I remember talking about was like when it was snow and ice, you talked about like beet juice or something like that. And just, that was one memory that it was just like, okay, like that from council meetings, I remember you talking about. And then, but what I, what I enjoyed was, uh, is that even when I was not like councilman, you always sort of recognized me as a person and you just had the professionalism and did a fantastic job of what you did every single time, every day. And I just wanna thank you for your service, for everything.
Didn't really get a chance to know you personally, but I definitely thank you for your service that you put on. It's really the unsung hero, uh, what you don't think about, water breaks or any of that, until it happens and they're like, oh, then, then it's finally real. So I definitely thank you for that and everything you've done and definitely thank you for your service. I saw your Sapper attack too. Uh, I served in the military, so I instantly noticed that, like, oh, I hear today that you served in Desert Storm. Thank you very much for that service. So, thank you much and best wishes to, uh, what the future brings to you. I'm sure it's gonna be, uh, hopefully have more fun than freezing your butt off.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I don't know what to say, Matthew. I've known you for a long.
Oh, yeah.
And every time I asked for something, you were there. Uh, first of all, I want to thank you for your service. That's a friend of mine. You did a heck of a job then and you did it here. And you did a beautiful job. Every time I called you, you were on board, buddy. Them shoes are gonna be hard to fill. I tell you that right now. And don't say no, because it is. God bless you, you and your family, and enjoy your retirement. Like the other councilmen said, take them on off and come back.
I need to tell my wife that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Matt, thank you so much. Um, I, I know, like, lived here my entire life and it's something that we take for granted, just turning that tap. It's something that we do every single day until the day that it doesn't turn on. And, um, you know, we got a lot of young people here today. Uh, every time that that happens, there's a Matt Doring or, um, somebody back there that you have to thank for that. And, um, that's what makes this a great community, allows us to live our lives here. Um, and I, I know what you're saying. You, um, being in public service, you, you definitely are at the, at the mercy of, of, of people because they, because they pay their taxes. Um, but, um, just appreciate your professionalism and the service that you've given to the community and hope you're able to enjoy retirement, hope your wife doesn't make you work too hard, be able to golf a little bit. All right, all right, okay. Thank you so much. Enjoy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. First and foremost, uh, I think what you said was really important in regards to you trying to answer the calls of twenty thousand residents by doing what you do. Uh, you know, everyone's so quick, you know, when there is a water main break to ask the question, when am I gonna get water back? And they constantly focus on that. What they fail to realize is that there's a group of people digging into the concrete and mud and freezing cold temperatures, doing whatever they can to get water restored as quickly as possible. I remember taking my dog for a walk two blocks away and I think I bumped into you, got you and your crew out there. And all I could think about was, man, they're in this cold pit of mud and water. What can I do to make their night a little bit better? And I ran up to Bigby Coffee. I told the lady there what I was doing. They were just ready to close. And I said, the least I could do was bring you guys something hot to drink. And, uh, I think, you know, like you said, it's, it's about that respect. It's about, uh, knowing that there's a crew out there that's doing what they can for the citizens of Allen Park. And they do it, uh, yeah, it's their job, but I think anyone that's listened to you talk tonight knows that, uh, it's a little bit more than a job. You know, you dedicated twenty-five years of service doing this, uh, and that, that just says everything, you know? I, I appreciate it. Like, uh, Mr. Lally said, some very big shoes to fill. And, uh, enjoy retirement, enjoy the time you've earned. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Can I get, I get to finish? I do know this, um, Matthew cares. He cares a great deal about the community and the city. He, uh, he was always quick to rise to emergency issues. Uh, he was excellent in dealing with all kinds of clients and customers. Um, he could probably add customer relations to his resume. Unsung heroes, I think, is, is what, uh, DPS is. And I think, uh, we need to stop and think every time we see a water main break, who's out there and who's doing what. I think everybody else said it quite well. Uh, you are really appreciated. You will be missed. Um, but enjoy, enjoy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, everybody.
So, here we go.
The floor is yours.
I get to follow that. I love that. So, I just answered the question of Councilman Levin's. I was ten when, uh, when Matt took the reins here to City, uh, City of Allen Park. There's a lot of head shaking going on, apparently, so. Uh, I, I do wanna say thank you to Matt as well. He was very polite. Uh, Matt actually is the DPS supervisor, which is not water and sewer, uh, water holes. He's, uh, pounding your streets and making sure your trees are cut down when there's a storm, so, all the same need though. Uh, Matt, thank you very much. Every time I called or texted and asked him to go by and take a look at a resident, we'd get a Facebook, uh, message. Um, he would go over there, take care of it. I, I didn't have to worry about it. I know Tom the same way. Uh, if anything was assigned to Matt, he just went, went on it and was taken care of right away. And with the diplomat, uh, diplomacy as well and dealing with some very difficult, um, residents, I know that hard to believe, but sometimes residents are very, it can be difficult and, uh, I know, I know. But Matt always handled it very professionally and, uh, and satisfactorily, um, in most cases to the, to the resident. He explained to why he could do something or couldn't do something. I think he might be telling everybody right now that they're on the tree list though. Uh, I think there was a standard answer, there's a tree list and I don't even know where that tree list is now, so, but thank you again for everything. And, uh, there was one bit, uh, Matt, uh, when we did the city hall here, um, we mentioned that we were gonna work on DPS. And I think there was some doubt that he would have an office in the new DPS facility before he retired. Uh, we made that, met that deadline by a year, a little, little less than a year, so. Um, I, I think I got a challenge now with the, uh, chief and the deputy chief over the fire departments. Work on that next. But again, thank you, Matt, for everything you did. Councilman Lloyd, I look out at these students. What did these students do wrong that they're here tonight? Oh, I apologize. Do, do not listen to, do not listen to Councilman Lloyd. All right, I apologize. I was talking too much. I'll, I'll make it really quick. The, uh, the street improvement program is about ready to kick off again. The contractor this year, uh, Hard Rock Concrete, the new contractor for us, um, they'll be in the city here in the next few weeks to start some storm water, uh, work. And, uh, and they're gonna be working on Park Avenue from Champagne to Angelique, Rosedale from Moore to Wick. They're also Philomene from Park Avenue to Coell. What they're gonna end up coming in and doing is taking out the, uh, area nears the curb line. Uh, they're going to put in the new storm sewer and the new edge drain. They're gonna put stone back into that area and they'll be back here in a few weeks after that to, uh, kick off. Uh, but they're gonna come in and, and, and some, probably something we haven't seen before, they're gonna take out all the concrete and pour, probably, probably consecutively on all those projects. So we're gonna see them hopefully in and out of here a lot quicker than we have in the past. And, uh, le- less disruption to the residents that are on those streets, um, coming on here, so. Bear with us on those streets as we go through, but, uh, I think you'll be well worth it. And, uh, as we have on some other, this will be that last connection piece on Park Avenue too, so you won't have that ramp anymore to do the, uh, old Dukes of Hazzard. Kids at home, go Google that later. Your parents will tell you what I was talking about, so. Um, for street sectioning and utility repairs, the contractor for that is Sabone Cement. Uh, he's been around the city doing, uh, utility repairs from water main breaks, probably that Matt was involved with, I believe, uh, those. Or Bill Minder, I'm not too sure on that, but, um, those happen over the winter time, so they're coming back and repairing those now. And also some smaller street sectioning areas throughout the city. He'll be kicking off, um, here shortly with the, the new street sectioning. Uh, gonna be over on, uh, on, uh, Philomene over near Sudman Park, I believe, this summer. And also Wick, uh, from, uh, basically Lawrence Cabrini down to the middle school. So we're looking forward to those, uh, take care of this year. Here on April twenty-eighth, uh, the Allen Park Fire Department held their first annual award ceremony. They handed out forty-eight awards, uh, to, uh, for various accomplishments, I believe. Those went back to two thousand and six, uh, for those accomplishments. Uh, this was a, a program that was developed and, uh, organized by Deputy Chief, um, Jeff O'Reilly. And, uh, they also, they had a, presented the two thousand and one Fire Fighter of the Year, uh, to Michael, to Sergeant Michael Shook. And that was a, a choice by his peers. That was a selection by his peers, which I think is the highest compliment you can receive as well. Uh, so we do appreciate Chief Cannon and Deputy Chief O'Reilly for organizing that. I know he was trying to get some accomplishments onto the Facebook page and we'll share those as well as we get those through, so. Some very good news also, uh, that was received by DPS Director Murray, uh, that the city was chosen by City Works to receive the Excellence in Departmental Practice Award for our region. Each year, City Works selects a handful of customers, uh, that are doing exemplary job of providing exceptional service to their community through the use of the City Works and ARC GIS program. Um, you see the, uh, the City Works program at, uh, in your, uh, packet every month, with the monthly report that's, uh, through that program. And, uh, the region here included Wisconsin, Illinois, Indiana, Ohio, now even the state of Michigan. So very, uh, happy to announce that award and, uh, a possibility that, that Tom may have to go to, uh, that hotbed Salt Lake City to receive the award. We're working on that right now to see what can, how can that arrange for him or not. And then, uh, also from, uh, news from Amanda, uh, credit card provider has changed from, from G two G to point and pay uh, for the building department, water department, and transactions at the lobby window. Uh, this will help, uh, streamline the internal processes as a point pay is integrated with the V S A software. So when that, uh, transaction goes through it automatically, I guess the councilor's not an extra couple steps, uh, being, uh, required. Uh, so we're really happy to have that, uh, in place. The A-PAC Parade is scheduled for Saturday, May twenty-first at nine o'clock. Uh, they'll start at the library parking lot and head west on Champagne Road to the Allen Park High School. Uh, there will be thirty-six teams participating in the parade in A-PAC this year. It's great to see, uh, so much activity going on with the, uh, through there. And then, uh, just wanna congratulate, uh, following employee to reach a milestone to a service with the city. And that'd be Logan Wheeler from the Police Department. He reaches five years here on May seventeenth. So congratulations to Officer Wheeler. And if you do see him out and about, congratulations on his five years. We do appreciate his service here with us. I don't have a, a really good update, uh, on the Allen Park Theater demolition yet. Uh, there was some, some discussion between, um, the, uh, environmental company that has to do the asbestos, uh, review as they're, as they're removing the asbestos from inside the building and the demolition contractor. Um, I do foresee that to start probably within the next few weeks. Um, and then also they'll be taking out, um, some of the non-concrete items, uh, the carpeting, the curtains, the chairs and stuff like that. That'll go to a separate, uh, landfill disposal as opposed to the concrete debris that they'll be able to use at the landfill for, uh, roadway and, and cover, a little bit different cover. And then I also wish I'd get some news on the historical museum, but at this point in time, uh, the only thing I've heard is that they are, Wayne County Community Development Block Grant is taking a request back to, uh, Wayne County Commission. Um, it was going through committee first and it'll be going through the commission for an additional, um, two hundred thousand dollars for that project. So we were awarded back in, uh, July, back in, I think it was July of twenty-one, a hundred and four thousand dollars to do, do some exterior improvements and also interior painting. Um, they're now going to add an additional two hundred thousand to make sure we get all those projects done. Once I have that, I'll have a formal award for you, uh, information, but still some positives. I mean, we're, we're still moving along. It just takes a little bit of time to, to get the, uh, items through their process there.
Anyone have any, uh, questions? Did have one come up with regard to the point and pay. As, as it exists now, anyone using a credit card, there is a fee that's charged.
Correct. Yeah, so if you're paying and, uh, with your taxes, there's a extra fee, um, that has to be paid above and beyond the tax bill. The city cannot, uh, the state law cannot have a lost on collection of property taxes. Uh, so that fee has to be added on there. When it's a water bill, it's based on a percentage of three, three dollars or three percent. And we do have multiple options if you don't wanna use credit card to pay your water bill. We have direct withdrawal, um, through an A C H process and, uh, I think there's, uh, some other items. We're gonna be putting that into the new, the next magazine to make sure residents, uh, have those options available, uh, that they can read in and sign up for.
Direct withdrawal is available for water bills as well as tax bills.
And email bills as, I believe as well.
Any other questions? If not, may I have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally. Second by Mr. Schleck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Now we come to public comments, uh, section of tonight's, uh, meeting. If, uh, anyone wishes to come up and speak, you are limited to four minutes. We just require that you give, give us your name and the street on which you live. Please do not give us your full address. So if any, uh, residents wanna come up first? All residents, we'll take on the next.
All right. Good evening and thank you to the honorable counsel, honorable mayor for allowing me a minute to speak. My name is Michael Griffey. I am a candidate for Congress in Michigan's thirteenth district that includes Allen Park. Um, not gonna hold you too long, especially if I'm standing between, uh, some young folks.
They're signing the thing I'm voting for right now.
To, to understand me a little bit better, uh, is to understand my grandfather. Uh, who moved to E Corse, Michigan in December of forty-eight, put thirty years in McLa- at McLeod Steel. And I remember that plaque proudly hanging in his wall and, you know, I see the gentleman, Matt, um, who was recognized today. And that's a big reason why I'm running, because I'm running because I believe this is about people that have their feet on the ground actually doing the work. And we need to now set aside portable politicians looking for a better job than we actually have people like us actually representing us in Washington. My grandfather, the time he spent in McLeod Steel, he put my mom to, through college. My mom's a school social worker with the. My mom's a school social worker with Detroit Public Schools and in the evenings had a geriatric home health practice. When I think about the through line of my career, it's hard work. I started my career in the classroom as a high school English teacher, went on to become, uh, charter school principal while going to law school at night. I'm currently a civil rights lawyer. And the reason why I'm running is because I think we need to make sure that every child in America has a right to pre-kindergarten education that's curriculum-based. Um, folks that are working hard should be able to send their kids to preschool and not have to worry about fifteen hundred dollars a month burden. Every single high school senior should have guaranteed, uh, two years of post-secondary education, whether that be, uh, two years of guaranteed community college or, uh, some, a union-based, uh, apprenticeship program or other specialized training. Uh, really appreciate the opportunity to speak, my name is Michael Griffey. Uh, you can reach me at Michael at M I C H A E L G R I F F I E dot com. Uh, that's also the name of our website, and really looking for the opportunity to meet each and every one of you, uh, to learn more about you and, and your needs in Allen Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mark Bailey on Philomene Street. I would, uh, just personally like to thank Matt for saving my life with collecting pumpkins for many years. And all the other hard work you've done for a little event that we have on Park Avenue. Without you, it wouldn't have happened like it does, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's no others coming forward, we will close public comments and we will move on to tonight's consent agenda, which consists of purchasing actions of claims and accounts and payroll report, finance, a finance overview, budget to actual report, balance sheet and cash flow, and a license and permit, parade permit for the Downriver Runners on August sixth, twenty twenty-two, which is the annual street fair run, be waived. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins.
Second.
Supported by Mr. Marcos. I have to start hearing with my right ears.
There you go, yeah, absolutely.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you very much. Resolution one, the resolution to appoint Water Supervisor William Minor to the position of Deputy DPS Director. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. Dialogue, please.
Thank you, I mean, uh, thank you, Mayor Counsel. I put in here that this is, for the past few months, I've been working with Tom on this issue and it, it actually has been the last few years. This is, I was, I kinda laughed at when I looked at my notes. This was actually, me and him had been discussing this since December of two thousand and eighteen. What we're looking to do here is, uh, to restructure the DPS administration, um, but I, I told Tom the only way I could feel comfortable agreeing to present to Mayor Counsel was that there'd have to be no change in the amount, in the structure. Number of people in the structure that we currently have, which was four. The current, uh, staffing is the director and then three supervisors. Supervisor for water su- uh, water supervisor, the roads and forestry supervisor, and then a motor pool and basin supervisor. Under the new structure, we'd be presenting, uh, presenting would be the director, deputy director, and then two su- two supervisors, water sewer, basin supervisor, and then roads, forestry and motor pool supervisor. The deputy would not, uh, would not be just, you know, by, uh, Tom's, um, fill in for this, take over this, do, do the kind of work I don't wanna, you know, he wants to shut off, but would actually be overseeing the sanitary sewer department and the, um, functions there in the DPS, uh, safety program. I say DPS, I mean DPS, I'm water sewer DPS, I, I kinda include them all as one, I know that they're not, but I include them all as one. We've attached that, the, the job description for you to review, but the other part too is, um, we've been, we've talked numerous times about succession planning. This is one more step in getting that, wanting to have succession planning, so when, uh, the time does come, Matt, or that, uh, Tom, he said to retire, we had at least a fill-in for, uh, a temporary basis.
Twenty years.
Twenty, twenty-five years from now.
So, yeah. My wife.
Well, we've got time to go, so. The person we'd be looking at to fill this position is Bill Minor, he's the most qualified in the department to fill this, uh, role. Did talk to the Human Resource Committee, uh, on this and, uh, with the, the salary, uh, to be eighty-two-five and then also, uh, closing allowance of seven fifty and an S three license, uh, of four hundred dollars. I, I believe, uh, Bill is, uh, working on, has one, a license, and that would go up, uh, to the six hundred dollars, which will be paid for Tom and the other, uh, personnel. And I, I did put in here, well, this is, uh, uh, part of the twenty-three budget that we just approved. I would ask that, that Counsel would consider, uh, you know, approving this, that the starting date would be tomorrow. Uh, because, uh, during retiring and, and you've gotta fill some spots here, so. If, uh, that'll, we, we, I think we have the budget, the numbers to, to work on that aspect as well. But, uh, so I'm just asking for, well, you, how do you have a bit of time?
I was just gonna help him a little bit. So, the, the facility that you all voted for us to build was a major contributor to us being able to reorganize this in that way. We used to have the mechanic's garage over a mile away. We now have everybody under one building, giving us the opportunity to put down to two supervisors 'cause they're all in the same building and watch and oversee that, and then give us somebody, as Mark said, to move up into the deputy position. That deputy position will help the city, not just myself, in the long run. If something were to incur to myself or whoever your director is at the time, you have a deputy to lean on. If you decide to go on the outside to receive and get somebody for qualifications when I were to leave, you still have a deputy for institutional knowledge. Right now, if something happened and I left, or whatever, God forbid, happened, you get somebody from the outside or whoever your best candidate is, they're very well-versed to be able to handle it, but they won't know the institutional knowledge of this city. And when I took over, that is kinda how it felt when I took over, so that has been one of the big reasons I did this is being a water supervisor myself prior, I thought I knew everything there was to this position and clearly found out real fast, there's a lot to learn. There's no classes in what we do to become a director of public service, so this would afford an individual to at least minimum be prepared to do such. I felt this was very important for the operations. He can also help the two supervisors, since we're going from three to two, if they have any help needed or guidance. So, you have a deputy who can go downward, helping the supervisors a little bit in any struggles they may have, and also help myself if there's anything I have to have. So, I thought this was a good spot to have an actual position, not just for me leaving. I think this should be a position forever for the city.
Any council members, I have any questions or comments? Mr. Lally.
I know William Meyer for a long time, he's very dedicated to the city, and he does his job without question, as, thank you.
There's no, uh, further comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, that. Motion has carried.
I don't put Bill on the spot right now.
Well, you just stand up, Phil, so everybody knows who you are. If they don't, if they didn't before this, congratulations.
Thank you.
Resolution two. To approve the Festivities Commission request to close down Allen Road from Southfield to Roosevelt on August fourth. Five P M. to set up through August seventh for cleanup for the fortieth, note that, fortieth Annual Allen Park Arts and Crafts Street Fair to be held on August fifth and sixth with the three recommendations from the city administrator and pending final approval from the police chief. May I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Questions or comments?
Uh, if I may, just to touch on the three recommendations that I put in, uh, requested to have Mayor Counsel approve, would be for road closures to be handled by an outside company that will shut down and open up Allen Road at the appropriate times and provide sufficient road closure warning signage along Allen Road, Southfield Road, Allen Road, Roosevelt, E Corse Road. Two, to secure the cor- and coordinate the services of the Allen Park Police Department through Chief Egan for time periods that will have a high visitor count. And three, alcohol is to only be consumed in designated areas as determined by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission with concurrence from, uh, Chief Egan as well.
Any comments or questions from counsel?
To, um, for the alcohol, is, I'm assuming it's gonna be, as, uh, is it just gonna be in one spot, like, one side of Allen Road? Or is it gonna be both, like how it used to be where it was two bands, or?
I'm gonna yield to Chief Cannon, I believe he was at the last.
From my memory, which is failing me fast, um, I believe this year, you are correct, there will be one end that will have a van shell and a, uh, alcohol consumption area, so we'll see how that works.
And, and it will have to come back to you for approval. And it, it has to be submitted with a diagram, so I'll make sure you guys will have it.
There was no alcohol last year at the, at the entertainment, so this is going back to some sort of, trying to get back to some sort of normalcy.
Uh, before I call for a vote on this, I do wanna make a comment. I just recently saw, um, minutes from the last Festivities Commission meeting. And for everyone who attends and enjoys, um, I, I believe these are posted on our website, uh, under minutes, um, agendas and minutes. Take a look and read what goes into these meetings, because you're out there enjoying it and you have no idea how much time and effort goes into getting this, uh, event put together. And it's all done by your fellow residents and volunteers who, uh, get absolutely nothing for it, except sometimes they get some flack, I think, which is not deserved. But, uh, to truly have an appreciation of what goes into any of these events, take a look at some of the minutes and give some thought perhaps to raising your hand and saying, hey, I can help. Because the more people who raise their hands and help, the easier it is for the rest of the individuals. And with that, I will call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Resolution three. Resolution to change all departments or organizations with petty cash funds to one hundred and fifty dollars in order to ensure the city follows the best accounting practices. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Now we move on to, um, council comments, and...
There's a spreadsheet for that.
Yes. You know there's one. It's the only way I keep track of things. Tonight, uh, we'll start off with Mr. Valerius.
All right, thanks, uh, first of all, for everyone coming out. Matt, thanks again for your service, uh, to the city. Uh, my message tonight might seem a little dark, a little sad at first, but please just bear with me as I go through it, okay? And this is basically based on some personal stuff that happened to me this past week, so. Uh, I believe that one of the toughest things that we go through in life, uh, is watching our parents, uh, age and pass away. You know, I'm sure all of us can attest to the fact that losing someone we care so much about, someone we love, is very hard and truly makes us all search for consolation and comfort. I have no grandparents alive today. My mom passed away unexpectedly in two thousand and nine. This past week, week actually, a week and a half ago, I rushed my dad to the hospital and spent many hours over the course of eight days in his hospital room, uh, just trying to spend as much time as I could with him. Doing a little bit of crying, doing a lot of praying, uh, just to hope that he would get better. Fortunately, he was discharged and I brought him home on May fifth, one day before his eighty-fourth birthday. I'm sure many people have suffered losses far greater than mine, I'm simply reflecting on life and love. We all know that death is part of reality, but tha- that doesn't make death any easier to accept. We live our lives embraced in the love of family and friends. I believe that love, that embrace continues far after the physical beings have left us. I continue to make memories and spend time with my dad. He's my mentor, my best friend, and the man I strive to be each and every day. We cherish these memories as those will be with us forever. And for the students, my wife and son, my son's old now, so he's been out of high school for a while, he's twenty-two. Uh, he gets, still gets a kick out of it when I send a random text message to him. Uh, like, every time I go play hockey, every time I'm out hunting in the woods, sitting in a tree stand all day, I just send a simple text that just says, "Love you both lots." And I wait for that reply and I get that reply. So, for both young and old, no matter where you're at in your lives, no matter what you're going through, uh, I just ask that you take a minute or two today, tell the people in your lives how much you care about them, how much you love them. Then, make it a habit and do it every chance you get. Thank you, take care, stay safe, God bless, I yield my time.
Thank you, Matthew. Gary.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Valerius, that's a tough act to follow, but I, I definitely want to reach out and say thank you to Mr. Kibbe, he's a man of words, and all the department's heads on their work on this budget. I know it was full of a lot of sweat, a lot of, hopefully not many tears, but thank you for getting that accomplished. I know that's quite the feat to get done, uh, definitely, and hard to understand unless you have a, a brain that gets that done because I certainly wouldn't without the fancy graphs. I wanna congrats again to Mr. Bruce Andrews for saving that child's life and everything that he has done and every teacher for this teacher appreciation weekend, as was mentioned before, it's, uh, only for one week, but maybe we should, as a city, consider expanding that for next year. And thanks again to Mr. Matt Noren for twenty-five years of service, that's simply remarkable. I mean, to serve that long and that much dedication to a city that sometimes then metaphorically kick you somewhere where the sun doesn't shine is quite the feat. So, uh, furthermore, I want to mention that, uh, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Believe it or not, this is something that's, uh, been recognized since nineteen forty-nine. It surprised me, I did not know that it's been recognized, uh, for that long of a period of time. Yet, more than ever, we need to recognize that, uh, the stigma that is mental health and, and if we need help and if we hurt, we need to seek it. Uh, talk to someone, don't let it build up, don't let it fester, it's, it's important to reach out to talk to someone, uh, without that fear of backlash. Because according to the National Institute of Mental Health, nearly one of five people suffer from some form, one of five. Out of everyone that you see up here, one of five suffers from some form of mental health. So, the time is now to talk to someone, to remember you are not alone to share these issues, that there's someone out there for you to talk about that. Finally, before we meet again, uh, we will come and pass Armed Forces Day. And Armed Forces Day is a holiday that is, that doesn't get the recognition that Memorial Day or Veterans Day does, but it's a day that celebrates those that are currently serving, and that is on May twenty-four first. So, I, I definitely wanna reach out and thank everyone, all the men and women who bravely serve us currently. And thank you to all the public that has joined us today, especially the students that, uh, are sitting like, like, get this over with so I can go home, so. I do appreciate coming because maybe one day, as was said many, many times before by my colleagues that are teachers, that maybe one day you'll be up here, maybe not, but at least you'll recognize the important work that is done for the city that is always not the most glamorous. And with that, I yield my time, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Gary. Charles.
So, last, uh, council meeting, I wore a police bow tie today for a firefighter bow tie, so I don't wanna be biased or anything like that. First off, I thank you all for coming, all the comments. I, uh, wanna say, uh, like Gary said, Memorial Day is coming up. Please make sure, again, that when you wave your American flag, that it, it's proper and not tearred or anything like that. Yeah, Memorial Day is for those who fought and passed away, there's a difference with Veterans Day, so, um, so just think of that. Please make sure you keep on supporting local businesses, it means a lot. We have businesses that last twenty years and...
We have businesses that last twenty years more and so it really does make a difference. Every Friday on Park Avenue, they have the farmer's market from three to seven. We have, just like the street fair in August, we have many events coming up. In June, we have the Cabrini Festival, we have the pizza, wine, beer event at the community center. Memorial Day, we have a ceremony up on the hill on auto drive, just make sure, which hill part? But just keep on looking at our Facebook page, the website for updates, events. Just like the mayor said about the festivities committee and the minutes, it's like go, go to their commission meetings and see what they do on all of them, historical, parks and rec, everything, so that you can get involved with your city, especially the students, like I used to be down there coming to the meetings even after high school and stuff, and here I am. It's, it's, it's one of those things that you just never know and you can be whatever you want to be as long as you work hard for it. With that, I, again, I hope everyone has a wonderful rest of May and stay optimistic. And God bless and I yield.
Thank you, Charles. Dennis.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Anders again for what you do, what you did. And all teachers out there, thank you very much, appreciate it, you have no idea. I want to thank Logan Wheeler for his five years of service with our police department. I'd like to thank Mark, I don't know if you guys all know Mark, he has McNally shoes on Park Avenue, it's been like a hundred years. And I want to thank Michael Griffey for coming and introducing himself. Also with, I wanted to talk just for a second, I'll keep it short, guys. Thanks for, to Matt Doring and the DPS, these guys, and I don't know if the cities realize it, you know, you see a lot of stuff online about, oh, this, that, and the other thing, it's not, I can't get it done, I can't get it done. I don't think the citizens really realize that our departments are, especially them, they're working at less than half of what they used to have. It's, it's a waiting list, I get it. The budget, as Amanda pointed out, there were some really rough times and due to some great financial finagling, it kind of brought things back around, the previous administration, this guy, these guys. So the residents, please, try to understand, it's, it's a patience thing. These guys are way understaffed and there's a lot of work to do, but they non-stop work out here. The city has changed dramatically, it's going great, they're, it's looking good, and these guys are really working hard and I appreciate it. And I wanted to thank the rest of the guys at the city council, because these guys, most of them have families. They, they take a lot of time out, if you don't know, they're, they're on different committees, they have, this is not just a two-hour job. As I found out. So it ta, it's, there's a lot of investment, personal time investment takes away from the families and and these guys care about the city and, and believe me, I can tell you, they're working for you. And, and I thank you guys for all the hard work that you do. The last thing, my message as usual, please come to the meetings, please come. We really would like to have residents come in and just to talk, it's a great thing to have. Thank you, you.
Thank you, Dennis. Tony.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Dennis, for good work. I have to probably say the same thing he said, but I do want to thank Matt for doing an excellent job and enjoy your retirement, my man. Thank you for your service. I want to thank the fireman of the year, Michael Shook. William Minor, I know you'll be a good man, buddy, I've known you for a long time. Like I said before, it's a shoe, it's a shoe in for you, you'll do, you'll do a good job. Thank you. And congratulations to Tom Murray for his what do you call that? Award. And, and I want to say something about the Vietnam Memorial that's coming up. And we're still working on it, we're gonna plan some kind of fundraising because we still need the money. We are selling the challenging coins for donation of twenty-five dollars. And I got them still. And then the Memorial Day Celebration, which Charlie Blevins said was, it's May the thirtieth at noon. So please try to be there and hopefully next year we'll have a parade. Thank you and good night.
Tony. Mr. Lloyd.
I just want to talk real briefly about something that was referenced a few times tonight. Ms. Wertz, when she got up and she talked, she referenced Joyce a couple of times. For those of you guys that don't know, that's Joyce Parker, correct? All right, which, when she was the emergency financial manager. So the state of Michigan determined that we, as a city, were no longer able to govern ourselves. That they decided that we, as a group of people, and that's not the people that are sitting up here, that's as a city, that you could not make decisions about how to run your city because you were irresponsible. And that put us in a massive hole. And, and that was something that our employees, fire, DPW, police, okay, all took sacrifices in order to get us to a spot that we're, we're at today. And so I know, okay, and I, and I honestly, I do know that sometimes when we're looking at spreadsheets and we're, we're saying what our income is and what our expenses are, that it's boring and may not be that exciting, but this is some of the most important work that we do. Making sure that we're financially solvent. If you follow the news, Birmingham Public Schools have a fourteen million dollar deficit. And that is going to mean layoffs, that's gonna mean that those kids don't get as good of an education, all right? So I am hugely, hugely, hugely grateful to Amanda Wertz and to Mark and Bob Katie before, and all the work that they have done to get us to a point that, that you guys can all come in here and, and we can, we can have these, you know, conversations about closing down for a, a street fair. Because of these sacrifices that they have made before. And that it matters. It matters that, that you are able to make those decisions as a, a group of people about what is best for your community. So thank you very much and I yield.
Thank you, Dan. Mike? Anything like that?
Just want to congratulate Matt and Bill, known them all for years. Sad to see Matt go and I don't know if people really know when he was the the ordinance warden, it was also what we called the dog catcher, I don't, that goes way back here, that's what the old timers used to call it. But Matt was one of the first ones to bring around the no-kill shelter. And we went from a little tiny hole in the back of a building to Matt brought it so far up that it just got almost too big to manage because it was just so successful, so. I'd just like to recognize him for that, so. Also, I want to remind people, I, I thank you gentlemen, I'm the head election official, so I can't say your name, but their election, you'll probably see a lot of them, the ones they're coming around for is August second, the primary. So it's good to see candidates, especially with all these new districts. So excuse me if I don't repeat a name, if you're on the ballot, I won't do that, but I will push that yours and the others' election is August second. And then for those of you that are seniors, November eighth is the big one, you can register to vote at seventeen and a half. You just go to michigan.gov/vote and boom, you don't even have to come into my office anymore, so. With that, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, God bless you and good night.
Thank you, Michael. I will be brief, because I hate being redundant. As I mentioned, we just finished teacher appreciation week. The, the Michigan Department of Education website, I would encourage people to go to because they mentioned that, according to them, they are viewing as, May is Teacher Appreciation Month. They also have some links you can click on to recognize teachers that should be recognized, and I think most of them should. There's probably a few exceptions as in any profession, but and the governor herself did a proclamation, and I will just read a small part of it, that teachers mentor, guide, and inspire students so they can reach their full potential and grow into successful future leaders. They provide every child the opportunity to learn, grow, and excel so they can contribute to our society, economy, and communities in a positive way. And along with parents, they are the most influential and significant mentors and role models to countless students across the state. And some of you may not realize it at this point in your lives, but I hope going forward, you can look back and recognize the difference that some of your teachers made in your lives, because they truly care. I can tell you this, I took a quick look at a, an article that popped up when I was doing a little research that said that teachers actually make twenty percent less than they did about twenty years ago based on inflation. So you know they're not in it for the money, they're in it for you. Think about that, take it to heart and respect it. May sixth through May twelfth is National Nurses Week. And again, we have the week, but I think we need to appreciate everyone in the medical profession, especially with what they've been going through these past few years. I also want to thank my fellow council members, because as I sit here and I listen to the comments that come at the end of these meetings, I always find it interesting to hear their perspectives, to hear their true emotions and to know that they care. And I want to let them know how much I appreciate the fact that we do work well together. There are some communities where you cannot say that, but I can tell you unequivocally that we do work well together. We may not always agree, but we do work well together. And with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins. Second by Mr. Lally. He sounded different. He sounded different. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, we are adjourned at seven twenty-four P.M.